This is Bristol Borough Council, regular meeting the border of June 11th. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence and let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Gerard, I believe is on vacation. Mr. Rikio.
Here.
Mr. Vine.
Here.
Mr. Pezzin.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Catroci. Mr. De Giuseppe. Okay, before we get started with our regular council meeting, we have someone here who has the honor for putting in seventeen years as a crossing guard. I'm looking, oh, there she is. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Mary Delissia to the podium.
Are you here, Mary?
Up front.
I'm up front.
She does so well.
Okay, I'd like to read the proclamation on the block here. Presented June 11th, 2018 by Borough Council, Mayor, and citizens of the historic Bristol Borough of Bucks County to Mary Delissia in recognition gratitude for seventeen years of service as a Bristol Borough Crossing Guard.
Do you want to say anything, or?
Um, give her a mic. Crossing guards, wait a sec, give her a mic.
Put her on the spot.
Face that way, so they can...
Crossing guards put their lives on the line every single day, and not with machine guns or guns or anything like that, but an automobile is also, can be, a machine that can kill you, and it's a dangerous job, and some people drive like the roads are ninety-five, you know, I-95, so it's just nice to be appreciated for all the times that I actually stood in front of cars. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor's communication.
I really don't have anything other than that I want to congratulate Mary on her seventeen years of being a crossing guard. As she said, it's not an easy job out there. You don't have to deal with the cars and everything, but, you know, they're just like the mailmen, they're out there in the rain, the snow, the sleet, as long as school's open, they've got to be out there and fill the post. On a side note to that, we are taking applications for crossing guards because we've had a couple people retire and some people moved, so there are some openings. Come into the Borough Hall, get an application and fill it out. It's a, oh, one other thing, too. If you missed it yesterday, the Flag Day ceremony for the Alps, they have it every year, right around this time, right around Flag Day. It's a beautiful ceremony that they have. They had it underneath the wharf last, yesterday, and it was, it was really a touching ceremony, and it was even magnified by being underneath the roof of the new finished wharf. I can't tell you how many people came up to me afterwards and commented how nice the wharf looked, you know, with the improvements that were made, so that's it. Thank you.
Ralph, I just mentioned something before we started. I just want to recognize the passing of Kelly Cochran, who passed away last week in her battle of cancer. Kelly was a school board member, but she was really just a great person, loved kids, she was a great mom, a great wife, and just somebody who loved life and loved people. So she's going to be really missed, and, you know, I just, I just feel so, so sorry for her husband, her family, and the kids in the community that, you know, really depended on her, so that's all. Dennis.
I have that on my thing to mention. Public participation, anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything at this time, go to the podium, state your name and address. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Nick Mustazie, 531 Maple Street. I'm here to talk about our recreational basketball program that just passed, so if I can go through some stats about last year and participations, bear with me for a few minutes. We had a hundred and thirty-five kids participate, we had seventeen teams, a hundred and thirty-six games, and we played in two locations. We had a bunch of sponsorships that I like to acknowledge, and the sponsorships directly paid for our referee, who we try to get out there as much as possible. I'd like to thank JT and Sons, MD Medical, APE Company, Nickerson Performance, Scancella Concrete, Profender, Coaches vs. Cancer, Children of God, TIA Incorporated, Great ID by Ann's, RJ Laminate, Caesars, CBM, Miguel's Barbershop, State Farm Insurance, Stevenson JCB, and Radcliffe Insurance. They all paid a hundred dollars, and all that money went to directly paying for a referee. I'd like to say special thanks to all of our coaches. We had seventeen coaches, we have seventeen teams, and approximately twenty-five volunteers, which was a great number. I'd like to thank our referee, Bill LaRosa, who was a local product. We did a really good job, he was on time, handled the kids very well. I'd like to thank all the ladies in Borough Hall for all their accommodations and their help through the season. I know I can be a pain with emails that are coming up, but they really did a great job and bear with me. I'd like to thank the school district who provided both gyms at no cost. They opened the door for us whenever we needed, put us in a schedule. Mr. Lally was pretty proactive about having recreational nights next basketball season, playing like mini-games at halftime, just to promote youth basketball, and Coach Petrino and Coach Devine's goals. I'd like to thank Ann Walp, who did a phenomenal job with, with about a hundred and sixty shirts in about two weeks, so it was a pretty pressing time for her. I'd like to thank the council for their support, without you guys, this wouldn't happen. I'd like to thank my secretary and the vice president, my wife, who did all the organizing and everything for me at home with all the registration, and all the other volunteers who helped out for registration, I'd like to thank them also. Next year, we're actually meeting tomorrow with the two head coaches and Mike Popp, uh, Mike Pops. The four of us are going to come together with a plan about next year. I think we're going to go in direction of having more clinics and less games, so it's more organized, and if you guys get a chance next year, I'll post schedules, maybe on the Borough website, so you can come out and see a game. Probably the first couple games we saw, there was between fifty and seventy people in the stands at a recreation game, which was a phenomenal number of people, and I just feel that we want to keep the momentum going, so just want to make sure we have your guys' support for next year, so any questions, or?
I'd like to say something. Nick, you did a fantastic job, and I was at many games, and I just can't believe the amount of kids and the amount of help that you got, so, you know, I'm really proud of you, you're amazing.
Yeah, and it's, it's a credit to all volunteers in football, basketball, softball, baseball. It's not easy, it's not, you know, you've got to deal with kids who don't want to be there sometimes, parents who, you know, just want to do their own thing, but it's not an easy job, and we do it for free, so it's a, it's a pretty trying position sometimes, but it's very rewarding, so.
How many kids you have, Nick?
We had a hundred and thirty-five kids.
It was really bad.
And we charged ten dollars a kid, and that includes a shirt with the number on the back, and, and it's kind of hard to beat, so.
And Dom there, he played really well.
Uh, it's my son, yeah, so.
Your Dom?
Any questions about anything, or?
For Nikki?
No. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, thank you.
That ends public participation. All right, so number three on the agenda is to approve the minutes, but there were some minutes not in the packet. I think Mr. Don, you want to explain that?
The June 4th minutes were not in the packet, so did not, you know, we'll leave that for next.
So you want me to do the motion first?
We'll approve everything except the June 4th minutes.
Okay.
Everybody understand that?
Yes. Mr. President, do you want me to do that now, or do you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council minutes of 514-18, to accept the treasurer's report for April 2018, to accept the police and DJ's report for May 2018, to accept the fire, fire chief's report for May 2018, to accept the inspection department report for May 2018, to accept the public works department report for May 2018, to accept HARB report and decisions for 521-18.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we go off to the next item, Kurt and Amanda are here to give us a little update on the Basin Street road widening, another plan that they just want to present. While you still want to stay here.
I did.
All right, so, you know, there's been some discussion about the intersections down by the wharf, and it's all positive, you know, reaction to the amount of increased foot traffic and vehicular volume that's occurring at that intersection, so we've been kicking around a variety of different options, trying to help improve the interaction between vehicles and pedestrians, and this is the latest iteration, you know, it's at a concept plan level still, so it's a real high altitude level, you know, not until we get into the preliminary design, do certain things, you know, fall into a more refined, you know, plan, but some of the improvements are really focused around trying to channelize vehicles and better define areas where the pedestrians can safely cross roads and vehicles sort of know where they're going. So just a brief overview of the layout, you know, up here along Mill and the intersection with Radcliffe, what we're talking about is bringing the sidewalks out, away from the buildings, and that shortens up the crossings for pedestrians. It also provides, you know, more space at the intersection for when pedestrians are figuring out which direction they want to go, you know, other pedestrians aren't walking out into traffic to get around them. And, you know, when you really look at this intersection where the vehicles are actually traveling, it's pretty narrow, there's only a few motions with, you know, Mill Street being a one-way road, as is Radcliffe. And then down around the corner, down here between the King George Inn and the new development that's under construction, you know, it widens out the radius, which is part of the problem down here now, it's a tight radius, and, you know, it provides a better defined crosswalk. Additionally, there, right now, it's kind of, you know, I don't want to say a free-for-all, but there's people that sometimes park down along the waterfront, and I think with the docks there, there's a lot more of a need for loading and unloading. So we wouldn't propose these be permanent parking spaces, we'd propose these spaces be reserved for like loading and unloading, and, you know, I've heard and seen experiences and talked with people, people come and, you know, want to carry bags or coolers or things on and off of boats, and, you know, I know that some elderly people, they come down for an event on the waterfront, I think Amanda's family had a wedding and their grandmother, you know, actually parked there to get out onto the, on to the dock platform, so again, it's real high level right now, but, you know, we'd be looking for feedback from council, and if this is a design that everyone's supportive of, then, you know, we can take it to the next levels and get it prepared. Maybe not all for construction in one shot, it's a very high-dollar project at this point, there's a lot of asphalt and concrete changes, and it's going to affect some of the underground utilities as well, so it's probably not something that, you know, is in, in the budget without some extra support, but we might be able to phase it, just try to take care of some of the more immediate areas of concern.
So Kurt, Alex, you have one. So basically, you're trying to tie this into the master plan, that we're trying to, we're trying to do a master plan for the entire parking lot, and what I like about this, and I only seen it a few minutes before the meeting, is the island in front of the King George and up in there, because what it does is, if you're coming down Mill, it keeps you to the right, if you're coming down Mill and you're going to Radcliffe, that island keeps you going left, and if you're coming up, it's going to force you to go. So you're not in that circle that Kurt's talking about, where people are just crossing anywhere they want to go, and I like the bump outs, which puts you, you know, instead of curb to curb, it brings it in a lot. So it's a plan, and, you know, it's a working plan, I think that, you know, just keep giving Kurt some direction on how everybody feels about.
Kurt, so the widening would be, the physical widening would take place only toward Mill and not toward the river as well, or is it both?
Well, I mean, the widening is really down in this intersection here.
Yeah.
But, you know, a lot of the other areas, this was actually, this is actually narrowing.
Narrowing.
You know, with the, with the curbs getting bumped out.
What I meant is down near the water.
Down here?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's wider, but it's not a lot wider because there's already, I forget the exact cartways and what this cartway is, but there is enough room now for two-way traffic and parking, but really, this is where the most significant change is, is that curb line.
How many feet will you gain there, in that area?
In this area here?
Yeah.
I mean, it goes out to a point, it's really, it comes out pretty sharp, so I bet you it's a good ten or more feet.
And then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
The two, I may have missed this, but I see the island, and then I see like a brown across the street, like in front of it and behind it, those three brown, like, are they, what are those?
These are just crosswalks.
Okay.
Yeah, and...
Like, would they, would they be, like?
Identified as?
Like identified as, like, with like cobblestone or something like that?
I mean, you know, the, the ideal thing, we just did, speaking of the master waterfront plan, the whole park and parking lot, we just submitted last month an application to DCED, or DCNR? DCD?
DCNR?
DCNR, for doing that master planning, and this would be part of incorporating that, but if we were able to acquire outside funding, then, you know, there's all kinds of different materials you could put down there. You can put down real breaker, real cobblestone, I would think that we'd probably recommend not doing that, we'd probably look at some kind of street print where they take the asphalt and they actually stamp the pattern into it, and then coat it with either an epoxy coating or a specialized, you know, paint product.
Gotcha.
Tony?
Yeah, Kurt, it just seems like, I mean, to me, it just seems like we're doing a lot of work for something that seems simple to me, I don't, why can't we just make that a one-way street going that way, just coming down?
A one-way?
Yeah, just make it a one-way.
I mean, we, we looked into that, and ultimately, I don't personally, I mean, and our traffic engineer agrees, that the problem with doing that is, if you're coming in Mill Street, let's say it would be one-way this way.
Yeah.
So now you can't get back out, so anybody that's trying to head across town has to go back up, get into the queue of Mill, and now you're adding more vehicles on Mill, and there's people, parallel parking and intersections with its own crosswalks, and it's just, why would you want to add more, I mean, we have plenty of room right here to do two-way.
Yeah, but I don't think that it would, I think that if you have one-way traffic, I mean, it just makes sense, I mean, to me, I think that that should be one-way regardless, I mean, it should have been...
But then, but then you're, like I said, you're pulling more people up and getting them back into Mill Street, and here you're just scooting right down Radcliffe and, and...
No, I'm saying, if people in general, I mean, we do it all the time, if we're going that way, we're just going to hit one of our one-way streets to get down the other end of Bristol, if they're not from Bristol, they're going to go up to the main, you know, thirteen.
I mean, I was just going to say, you may know which one-way streets, but you can really get lost in some of the one-way streets, even coming out of the park, you know, out of the parking lot.
Or we don't look at it to go up only, up to, because of all the trucks, you couldn't make turns, and a lot of the trucks can't make turns down Pond or Cedar, and if you bring them up Pond or Cedar, or Pond or Wood, whatever, they're not going to make the turn on the Mill. So you're, what you're doing is you're bringing it, the truck traffic, down Radcliffe, make the left, go all the way down Market to the light, make the left again, and then come looping back around. So again, I mean, this is a plan, a working plan, I think, you know, we're just trying to get some ideas on how everybody feels, but that area, if you go down there this weekend or whatever, you'll see how congested that corner is, and with pedestrians standing there, I think it's even getting worse now.
Yeah, that's why I think it would be better with a one-way, you won't have so many, you won't have up, coming up, and going down, right, you won't have the narrowing of...
I think you'd just be pushing a bubble in the carpet from here up to another intersection where more traffic are going to be.
Even, even if you did it one-way, either way, you still have to, you have to cut that corner back.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's almost like a natural turn when they had Basin Street open to the other parking lot behind the banks.
And, you know...
And if you look at it, it wants to flow, coming down those, it wants to flow to the left, and there's nobody there now except the King George.
Yeah, and whether we love it or not, you know, we have to maintain that loading space for the King George, I mean, without that, like, let's say, for instance, whatever one-way configuration prohibited trucks from going there because, you know, they'd be playing chicken with whatever cars coming the opposite direction, you know, it's, it, for the sustainability of that restaurant, like to try to do something on Radcliffe or, you know, on Mill would be...
Suicide.
Yeah, pretty...
And the other problem is, when that restaurant opens, we don't know how much traffic that's going to bring to that area. Let's say it's a 10,000 square foot restaurant, it sits a couple hundred people, I mean, it's going to be a nightmare down there.
But that's even, to me, that would make even more sense, to keep it one-way, that would just go in.
But we still, you still need to get that traffic to flow.
We have, just going back to the, to the two-way, I mean, this, this two-way works really well, we don't have a lot of, you know, this is, this is a simple intersection with two-way, there's not even a third leg bringing vehicles to it, so, you know, we're not, we're not creating vehicular conflicts at, at this location at all. So two-way works, you know, really, really well, and I think the benefit of maintaining that flow is, is far outweighs the, any benefits of making it one-way.
Anybody? Tony?
The, um, the parking that you have down there, you're not moving the sidewalk or anything, you just put that pocket, I'm going to call it pocket parking.
No, the curb.
It's pretty close, I don't know if it's identical, but I'd say it's kind of holding that.
That's staying the same.
It's close.
And then we definitely have to make sure that people understand.
I think it angles a little bit.
You can't park your car and hang out all day.
Yeah.
Something, something counter-related, it's, I'm down there a lot, I'm down there at the canteen there, and I sit down there for a couple hours, and there's still a lot of traffic coming up Radcliffe Street all the way up to Mill, I don't know if we could tie something in that, I mean, I know we have the signs out there at Market, and it just, it just throw them, I'm down there, I see three or four in an hour, people's coming all the way up.
Yeah, we, we looked at that a little bit, I wouldn't say last fall.
Yeah, because they're, they're coming, they keep going.
Yeah, they're going all the way. Yeah, if you're not from here, you would definitely think that you just keep going straight, I would.
I think there were some recommendations that the traffic engineer tossed out, you know, better signage, and, and, you know, improving the, the intersection, the crosswalks and, and the signage and getting the sign, like the nice thing about this kind of configuration, right now, the new stop sign is, is hanging out, you know, behind the curb, and you come down Mill Street and there's cars parked, you may not see that stop sign that well, but when you...
Sometimes they see them and they still aren't stopping.
When you pull that, when you pull that curb line out, then the stop sign gets pulled out more in line with the travel lane. So, but when, similar type thing, you can do similar things and they do not enter that are more prominent, you know, invisible.
Well, the day we walked that whole area, and we're thinking about where to put the banners.
Yeah.
And we looked at the blinking lights, and there was a reason why we couldn't lower them, I can't remember.
I thought it was because of pen dots, because I knew you were there.
Yeah, it was, because they're so high that they can't come down, but there was something in a way, or something that, I forget.
Yeah, I don't recall, I mean, all, all this stuff is obviously subject to Pen Dot's high occupancy permit.
The banners should be...
Should be wider.
Should be deeper.
All right, anybody else have any questions on this? So, we'll, I don't know, maybe refine a little bit and get back to us and see what you think, and maybe something we can go out to bid with, we're working on grants, just to get an idea on cost, and like you said, maybe it's got to be phased in, maybe we do that upper piece first, because that seems like the problem, but I think that this summer, and once we find out about this restaurant, I think we're going to really have to figure out what we're going to do there.
Do they have a proposed time of finishing that, or?
I don't know.
If we're rounding that curb down, down on Basin Street, that's just taken away, right, so that's not going to cost too much money to do that, right?
No, I think we could do the lower end now.
Yep.
Widen that road and put the drop-off lane in.
Put the island in.
And the island really can be straight right now instead of an island.
I think the island would help.
That would help out a lot.
For the traffic.
You know, Kurt?
That would be, you know, paint, painting, painting crosswalks and hatching and things is a lot cheaper than concrete and asphalt, so we could maybe come up with like an interim plan, and that's nice, because you kind of get the test drive it, you know, you kind of implement some of the, some of the emotions and...
If I know that quarter down there where it's coming out now, that does need to be set back a couple feet and round.
Well, they do it with a car that's moving on a computer, showing that if it's coming down or a tractor, how much you need to make the turn.
Yeah, a 40-foot tractor trailer can still back in, you know, they'll, they'll swing out a little bit, you know, but it's kind of strange.
And again, no matter what we do, everything is subject to Pen Dot approval.
Yes.
Not down.
Yeah, down here, yeah, I think Pen Dot's jurisdiction ends somewhere down here, but all this stuff, absolutely, yep, yep.
All right, while you, while you...
I could put a pylon up on more, I think, I kind of remember years ago, they had a concrete pylon right in the center of Market Street with a post and a sign on it.
Yeah, probably not.
I think it got knocked down a few times, and that was the ending.
I mean, they have these plastic delineators, George, if you're listening, I apologize, public works guys hate them, because they just get knocked down all the time, but, you know, the combination of line striping and plastic delineators are the way to try to channelize people that are allowable.
The other thing is, you have a little campaign, and you start, people get taken a few times, they're going the wrong way there, which is really a safety hazard, they learn, they'll learn real fast.
So while you come back in July, would write this into two options, widen the road as one, and just line painting that island and things like that.
Okay.
And then face two, also a master plan.
Sounds good.
All right?
We need Pen Dot approval for the bump outs.
For anything on Radcliffe.
Pretty much from somewhere in here, I don't know the exact, up, you'd need Pen Dot, and then from here down, their jurisdiction ends somewhere around where King George is. Sounds good.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, Eric, do I have anything else before we move on to our last item?
Councilman President, just a quick, real quick.
Go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry.
Just last week, Councilman Gerard brought up a question regarding fireworks in the borough, and I made the statement that fireworks are illegal in the borough, and basically they are, underneath the new state law that's passed, just for some clarification, so everybody understands it, they cannot be discharged, I'll actually read the list, they cannot be ignited or discharged on a public or private property without express permission of the property owner, not the property renter. They cannot be discharged from or within a motor vehicle or building... They cannot be discharged from or within a motor vehicle or building, they cannot be discharged toward a motor vehicle or building, they cannot be discharged within a hundred and fifty feet of an occupied structure. Pretty much takes care of the borough. They cannot be discharged while the person is under the influence of alcohol or controlled substances. I just wanted to clarify that, just in case anybody thought that we were talking about an ordinance within the town, the borough, or not, we're talking about a state law, but it's more than enforceable in here with that hundred and fifty foot rule. Just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Anybody have any questions for the chief?
All right, so the last thing we have is this Harb issue, I'm gonna reclusive myself from discussing it, and I said that last week, since my son is the realtor on the property, so I'm gonna have the solicitor basically run the meeting and, you know, to get this resolved.
Okay, thank you. So the forecounsel is an application for certificate of appropriateness for three oh one, three oh three Radcliffe Street by Mr. Ravina, for vinyl fencing, uh, along, um, drawing a blank, what's the street?
Mulberry.
Mulberry. Mulberry Street. And, um, and in the front, uh, there's a gate on Radcliffe Street, I believe. So I wanted to be clear what the focus of this, this decision is. Uh, Mr. Ravina had been before Harb or another matters, council made a decision on that some months ago, that's not an issue here. Uh, there was some issue for whether, uh, Mr. Ravina had to go in front of zoning for the fence, but I spoke with the zoning officer, as I mentioned last week, that, that's been resolved, he doesn't need to go to zoning. So the only issue before council tonight is whether to issue the certificate of appropriateness for the vinyl fence. All right, so Mr. Ravina applied to Harb, he was heard on December eighteen, two thousand eight, seventeen, and then as a result, the Harb issued the decision, which you have, which was January twenty-nine, two thousand eighteen, where they recommended not to approve the certificate of appropi- yes, for the PVC fence. And it states the reasons in there, based upon the historic design guidelines. And though the rules for, for this are not very clear, in fact, I'm not sure this has ever happened before council before, where council has been asked to issue a certificate against the recommendation of Harb, but the, uh, the manual, the Pennsylvania manual for, for, uh, Harb boards indicates that if someone does appeal, uh, the recommendation of Harb to council, that Harb should have an opportunity to make their argument to council. So we've asked Harb if they wanted to make a presentation, and Rich Snyder, who is the, I mean, Rich Murphy, who is the chairman, has been the chairman for many years, is here to make a presentation on behalf of Harb. What I'm gonna suggest is let Mr. Murphy make his presentation with Robin, and then council has any questions, they can ask Harb questions. If Mr. Ravina, again, wants to make his presentation, he doesn't have to, since he made his presentation last week, but if he wants to make a response, or submit a response, he can. And then, um, uh, it, the matter will be placed for vote to council. Uh, I believe it was asked to be put on the agenda, it's not specifically listed as an agenda item, but it is an agenda item, and council at that point, a motion will be made, and council could decide whether or not to issue the certificate of appropriateness for the fence. Okay, so this is all that this has to deal with, it has nothing to do with anything else regarding that property, and I would ask that you keep your questions to that issue and that issue only. Rich and Robin?
I just ask if I can say a few words, you know, before we get into the topic at hand, uh, on the fencing. Okay, okay, I'm sure most council members are aware this has been a long process for this property, for Harb, uh, all the way back from, uh, the reconstruction of the burned-out nineteenth-century brownstone, and unfortunately, it had to be demolished, and then there was, uh, renewed life in the property when we were given the, uh, application for the twin homes, uh, for the property. And at first, Harb members were very upset with the original, uh, design of the property. It didn't really fit in with the, uh, historic properties on the street, and, uh, we, uh, we realize this is a new construction, it's not a rehabilitation of a building, but there's been several homes in the six hundred block and nine hundred block of Radcliffe Street, which lend themselves to the, they fit in with the historic architecture of the street. That being said, uh, we had many meetings and long discussions, uh, on the property, and, uh, with changes, I think Mr. Ravina did a nice job with the facade of the property, uh, with the new porch design and the brick facade. Uh, we would have liked to have seen a porch roof over the, uh, third story deck, but, uh, we made some compromises. He did, uh, a lot of architectural moldings on the roofline and the cornices. And, uh, pretty much everything was said. And, uh, a six-foot stockade fence was installed before Harb had a chance to review, uh, the application. And that's where we stand now, and, uh, Robin, our sort of our design guideline administrator, uh, we'll talk more on that.
First, I'd like to, uh, say thank you to council and, um, Mr. Dolan and, um, Mr. Salera for letting us come and speak. Um, at the meeting, we did present, um, uh, the design guidelines, which, um, is online and available for everybody to review, and these are the guidelines that we go by as a Harb to preserve the character of, um, the landscape and the streetscape in a Harb district. Um, page fifty was submitted as the reasons that we did not approve the fence. And just real quickly, you all have it, it's online, if anybody has a question, we have copies. But it clearly states that the types of fences, um, that would be allowed, and the shiny vinyl fence that was, um, put on the property is not a proper fence that would be approved in that, um, district. So that was our reference for, um, our meeting minutes for the application. There were a few other things in there to note that all of the Harb members, um, were in agreement and did not approve the fence. And all the Harb members that are not in attendance here, as well as Rich and I, would like it put on, um, uh, the minutes for this meeting, that, uh, whatever transpires, that we are not, um, recommending the fence that is there to this day. I think that was it, that I had, that, um, everything is in front of you. So all the Harb minutes are available for, uh, question, if anybody has any questions, but that's it. Any questions, or?
Okay, council members?
Yeah, I, I have a, I have a question. The design guidelines, are they, are they borough guidelines, or are they kind of a state of Pennsylvania, a national thing?
The design guidelines were, um, can I show that? This is the book that we have hard copies available there in Borough Office, this is also in a PDF form on the Borough website, you can click and view it. This, um, was, um, approved by council in two thousand thirteen, and the design guidelines, um, go by, um, the PHMC, uh, guidelines according to the National Registry of Historic Places. So this is a design guidelines that, um, is used across the state of Pennsylvania. Most boroughs are not as fortunate as we were, that we got a grant to do this, and it was, um, done to represent Bristol Borough. So some things are admitted, like, we don't have barns here in Bristol Borough, so we don't have a section. So this is what we go by as far as recommending, as a recommending body.
And then, um, I, I guess, I, I don't know if it's open for interpretation, but I was just reading what you guys sent us about, um, rear areas of lots when we talk about the, the fence in question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where it says, uh, the chain link fences and plastic fences are not recommended in historic district, except on rear areas of lots.
Mm-hmm.
The, the fence we're talking about, you don't, you wouldn't consider that a rear area?
It's a corner property, so it's a major, uh, you know, and as Harb, we do not look at the backs of buildings, but if anything is visible from the front facade, it is always looked at and, and brought before an application. That is a very prominent corner, it's a very prominent corner, it's, you know, you can see it going both ways on Radcliffe Street, yes.
I have a more, uh, specific question in terms of, now, when you have an applicant that comes into, you know, a Harb meeting or whatever, and they're talking about they are going to be living in the property versus just building or, you know, going to rent the property out, is there a little bit more leeway, a little more compromise within, or it doesn't matter?
I think we're very forgiving, and, and we as a board are more lenient than a lot of Harb boards in other boroughs, uh, due, you know, to a lot of reasons. Uh, that really isn't any of our business, it's basically construction and the Harb district, so, um, I don't think that we look at it that way at all. It's nice if somebody's going to buy and live, but that is not.
Right, okay.
We don't make a judgment that way.
All right, thanks.
Is a wood stockade fence allowable there?
Yes, yeah, and we did, we did even suggest, and we would approve a composite fence that would look like wood, not a shiny vinyl fence, that is, there's no shiny vinyl. We have, uh, turned down other applicants along Radcliffe Street that wanted to replace wood, um, railings and post railings on the fronts of their homes, uh, along the three, four, and five hundred block. Over the last few years, we've not recommended a few of those, so there are products out there that look like wood, and, um, you know, it was, it was the type of material that was used. The design of it was a little bit of an issue too, about how tall it is in the back, and it cuts off the corner, but I think it's mostly the design.
Yeah. And the height.
And the height.
It shouldn't be a six-foot fence coming right up to the sidewalk.
But it does, to, to me, it looks more appropriate than a wood stockade fence. When you talk about a wood stockade fence, it's that, it's a stockade.
Right.
That's not necessarily historic, just because it's.
Well, it has to be appropriate to the building and the streetscape, so right across the street, you know, you have other things that could have been used instead too, you know. Preferably, I would prefer something that looked more like, you know, wrought iron, or like what was across the street.
Or even if it was a plank fence, alternating plank, you know, that.
Getting back to the corner, the front, uh, I think that property is unique because it's sitting right on the sidewalk. So by the time you're at the end of the house, that's no longer a front yard, that's a back, you know, it's a back, it's, it's a rear yard, and I think the, uh, privacy issue there for, for the new owners, a very small, uh, you know, it's a, it's a small area. But I think it gives them some, I think, design-wise, I, I, I don't find it, I find it more objectionable that you, that you have glass between, grills between the glass.
Mm-hmm, I know.
You know, and then.
That, yeah, well, we're not.
I, you know, there, there seems to be a lack of communication then.
Yeah, I think the guidelines, when they say rear yards, they're not talking about a corner property, it's, you know, property, and you can't see the fence this way in the back, but where this, it more or less is really right on the sidewalk. And it spells it out, even if it wasn't so opaque, you know, there was pickets or something, you could see a little bit, like, left to do, it says that right in the guidelines.
And the discussion would probably go different, but the fence went up and it wasn't before Harb.
So, Rob, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, to that point, fencing first and foremost, in a historic district, not in a historic district, that is a, a zoning building code issue typically?
If you permit put up a fence, there's no question that the applicant did not seek Harb approval for you to fence up. I don't know if that's an issue tonight, I mean, it's, it's either gonna be approved or not approved. If it's not approved, then it is gonna have to come down. So that's really not for council at this point.
And I think all of these would have, would have been in the discussion, had it gone the channel that would be the path that you would go. You come, you put the application in, you submit your spec sheets, you submit drawings and pictures, and then we approve or make a recommendation for something different.
Are there any composite type fences that are, that could have been used?
There are, yeah, we've, we've approved them, yeah. There's, there's two gates that we approved on the upper, upper three hundred block, right before Walnut Street, that were approved, so.
So Anne's property, that's not considered, because the first, you know, he brought up that Anne has the same type of fence.
Right.
So Anne's property is also a corner property.
Right.
And the fence goes, you know, down the sidewalk.
Right.
So are they the same fence, or?
I don't remember.
Well, what it is, that, that was long before, we didn't approve that.
Yeah, I'm confused, but you know what I mean, like.
We wouldn't have approved that either.
You know, I respect you guys entirely, and I know your job is not that easy, if, if anything, but to say that this side could have the fence and this side can't, I don't know how.
I don't think it's a, I don't think we're questioning that, I think we're, we're definitely going by what we look at, the design guidelines and the design.
So you're saying that fence was there forever and?
Well, I don't know when it was, but, you know.
Sort of grandfathered in.
Right.
Okay.
But, you know, I think, I think if we just focus on why we did not approve it, it was specific to the type of fence that's put in there, you know, that's.
So I, I'm, I'm just in a place where, if I were you guys, I'd be very frustrated, and I, and I, I would, and I would under, and I completely understand that. Mr. Ravina should have gotten the permit that was required of him. The place where I am now, though, also is, if we deny it, what are we accomplishing? Because where I do honestly just disagree is I think the fence looks fine.
I mean, too.
To be perfectly honest with you, but, but if I were in your position, I would be more than frustrated. And I'm just where, like, what are we accomplishing if we tell them to take it down, that's kind of.
Well, I just, I guess, in, in my feeling, you know, just, I appreciate that you feel that way, you know, I wish it went the other way, that we could have had something there that, even if it was exactly the same, but it looked not just shiny white vinyl fence, you know, in a historic district, um, I would, you know, I would be a lot better off with that, but it's not the way it went. I'm more worried about the precedent that it sets.
Right, I understand.
So, you know, it's more difficult for we as Harb when the next person comes and says, well, why do they have it down there? I want that, um, so I think.
And they'll be at the meeting, and they'll be here at the next meeting.
Well, I hope that, I hope that it, I hope, our best hope is, is that anything that somebody is supposed to come to Harb follows the rules, whether they think it's, you know, because it's planters out front, or a fence, or new windows, um, and this has been a big learning experience, that we are very mindful, you know, so, um, that's where I'm at, you know. I'm more worried about what does it say, and we and the other Harb members that are not here just wanted it on the record that they did not approve this, so whatever transpires, that's.
I had suggested to Mr. Ravina, it's in the minutes, that maybe the first two sections be dropped to four feet, and so it just wasn't a big six-foot all the way right out to the end, and, uh, we didn't get anywhere with that.
Yeah.
At least it wouldn't look, you know, it would be lowered a little bit, right at the street, anyway.
And you do have to look at the overall streetscape of what, what we have here too, you know, you go to other corners and other corner properties, and yes, their house might be set back, they're not right up against the sidewalk, so the design element's a big factor, but, um.
I mean, I, I see you guys, like, to me, like, I couldn't care less, right? The reason I think that we appointed you guys is because you do care about that area and the historical district, so that's why you're there. And like, to me, like everyone's saying, the fence does look nice, but that's not for us to say, right? You guys feel a certain way, and I mean to. You guys feel a certain way, and I mean, to me, I think that's what, as a council, I think that we should, you know, go with.
And to answer Mr. Pezz's question, these guidelines were actually set up by the Department of the Interior and the PHMC sort of, you know, adheres to those, which we get from them.
But then, you know, the Department of the Interior's guidelines for buildings and fences in historic districts, they're the one that set the, it doesn't move.
We do have the advantage of being able to look at it now to see if it is appropriate. And I, and I, I know you're in a hard, you know, hard, hard place, and I don't like, I think we have a disconnect, and I explained that to you at the meeting I attended. I don't think we get, the message doesn't come across to us the way it's come, the way you want it to.
In my minute, in the minutes that I submit or in the application?
No, no, in our, in what we're, we're saying.
Okay.
What we're approving. I, if I knew that was going to be have glass between the, there are grills between the glass, it would have never got my, it would have never gotten my, I find that more offensive historically than any fence that they could put up there. The shiny vinyl, we do have the benefit that it's going to dull out in a few years, so that's, you know, and it doesn't, I personally don't find, I kind of like that compound kind of look, it gives you that inner city, Philadelphia, you know, the Tony Group Board used to be called Philadelphia Fencing for that reason. Everybody made their fences out of those one-by-sixes and they painted them, short of making Mr. Rabina paint it so it wasn't shiny.
That you could do that.
Well, you can do it, but it's not, it doesn't make sense to do it that way. It's going to, it's going to dull out anyway.
Yeah.
I don't want to look like I'm voting against the historic review board.
Well, I think, it sounds like that's the.
But it makes the most, at this point to me, would we like to slap his wrists for not going through the proper channels? Yes. But I don't think it does anybody any, any good at this point.
But what, Lou, but here's what's going to happen. So now, every time that somebody has a problem with HARB of what their ruling is, right? You're opening up a precedent. Now, everybody that has an issue is going to come here and say, listen, this is what you did, so what use is HARB going to be then? What?
Well, everybody can do that now, if they don't agree with.
Right, what I'm saying is, but we've always made it, you know, a conscious effort to, the reason why we put you guys there is because you guys are the ones that are doing it. If they didn't feel this strongly about it, they wouldn't have showed up over the weekend and we wouldn't have had to worry about it.
I don't doubt one bit. I know, I know the integrity of these people and their historical drive to maintain it, and I appreciate that. I have, you know, I've got a home on that street, and it affects me just as much as it affects anybody else, so.
It's a, it's a really strange situation. And it's, it's even stranger when, to reiterate what Mr. Crotrochi is saying, is like, so it is before us, you know, it is here. And when it is here, I'm deciding, I'm kind of deciding whether I like it or not, you know? That's kind of where I am.
Well, I think you have, you have to take your personal view out of it, and that's what we do at a HARB. I mean, we may make recommendations, but, you know, some of us might have ideas on paint color or something, but we don't.
It's almost like I'm viewing it like I'm sitting next to you on HARB now, and I'm like, well, I think it's fine, you know?
No, whenever we try to make suggestions, we try to have samples of, well, you could do this instead of that, or, you know, so you take your personal opinion out of it, pretty much.
All right, if I, if I may make a comment, because this issue of will a decision have a precedence on other decisions? Legally, it doesn't. We have this in zoning all the time. This is a special, it's a unique set of circumstances like anything else. It's not an easy set of circumstances, certainly difficult, and this whole process has not been easy. But it, number one, it legally would set no precedence. Number two is, as Robin said, they're very accommodating. I can't remember the last time you denied or you recommended that a certificate of appropriateness.
Yeah, we'll, we'll table a few things.
Right, you'll work with people, so it's very, very rare that a denial is going to come before this council, and council's going to have to decide whether to issue or not.
In 15 years, I can't remember any.
It's always that they work out all the kinks.
Yeah, we usually work.
On their level, and by the time it comes to council, it's already been approved. So we may go another 10 years before we even see something like this. So if that's a concern, I wouldn't, legally, there is no precedence to it because these are so fact determined, these, these applications, every corner house is different, et cetera, et cetera. And so, and, you know, obviously, council respects HARB because we, they've never had a problem with one of your recommendations that I can remember, and I've been involved with the Borough one way or another for almost 40 years. So we may never see this again or put council in this position. So, so the vote simply tonight is, does council, in this particular circumstance, want to issue a certificate appropriateness for this fence on this property at this time? That's it. They're not making any other decisions, the guidelines are still the same, and like I said, hopefully, in the future, we could persuade property owners to make the application first.
Right.
Which you probably would have been able to work something out.
Right.
It didn't happen here, but considering there have been a lot of other accommodations here, nobody's ever 100% satisfied when you're putting up a new building, but in this case, it seems that it looks nice. It's nice enough that it's been sold, and we now have a property back in, basically back in business after, I don't know, it's been, what, eight years, more than eight years since the fire? It's been a while.
Eight, seven. Six or seven.
Yeah, it's been a while, so, so that's a good thing about, that somebody could build a, a building like that, not cheap, and it sells, so it means good things are happening. If this fence is approved, I don't think anybody's going to hold it against HARB or say HARB's not doing their job or council's not doing their job. And hopefully, no matter what the vote is tonight, we all can move forward. But I don't think we're going to see ourselves in this position again for a long time, so.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Robin, I consider you a friend.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Murphy, I appreciate everything you guys, that you do, but I personally feel like it's a back, it's a backyard fence, and I think it looks nice. I know it's not what you recommend, and, you know, I want you to know that, that's how I feel. I do appreciate everything that you do, I don't want you to think I don't.
No, I know, we won't, we don't, we don't take it personally, and, you know, I, I was, you know, everything going through my mind and coming here today, you know, you run through everything.
And I understand your frustration as well, like, I do understand that it should have been brought before you first. I totally understand that.
And we try to look at, I, I think we, when we come, we try to look at everything as a whole. What is going on here? What's, what's three houses away? What's three blocks away? What do you, what do you see when you drive down that street? And that's, I think, how we look at that, and, you know, whether it's appropriate and follows the design guidelines, that would be the only other piece that I think makes a statement when you're driving through Bristol, especially in a HARB district, you know? What does your streetscape look like and are you following the guidelines?
If it had been out in the front area and there had been, like, a smaller one, then I would have definitely said no, but.
Yeah.
I really feel that it's in the rear.
Yeah.
And that's just my personal opinion.
Right.
Yeah, I'd just like to say something too, that what Robin just said. My wife operates a business, specialty shop in town, and she has customers come from Connecticut, Ohio, and Virginia that normally buy online, but when they're in the Philadelphia area, they stop. She has them come down Radcliffe Street from the Turnpike, and she's heard time and time again what a beautiful little town this is, the great homes and the architecture on Radcliffe Street, and this nice little shops on Main Street, they call it the Main Street, not Mill Street, but that's HARB's decision, keep it that way.
I understand.
I just want to, before we take a motion, I just want to let you know that, you know, as I said before, you guys do a fantastic job. I don't think there should be a reflection on, on you. I think we're packed into something here, and it ends up not looking bad, hindsight's 20-20.
Right.
So we have that advantage. But I also think, I'm going to say it again, I think that HARB needs to sit down with council and our zoning officer.
Right.
Because I don't think we're, not that we're not on the same page of historically, I don't think we sometimes understand, we may be approving something and then it doesn't happen, so there's a, there's a.
A disconnect.
A disconnect, and it's not council that's saying, we've never changed one of your decisions.
Right. Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I would want us to, I would love us to sit down because the follow-up is also an issue. If somebody doesn't, well, if somebody, we don't, if we recommend something and then council approves it, and then something completely different is done, that's the.
And that shouldn't happen.
That's the disconnect.
If we're approving it, that's.
But that's another, that's another meeting.
Well, it's another meeting, but that's a meeting that we need to have.
Right.
We needed to, we talked about it four or five months ago.
Right.
Yeah.
So I.
So I think it's time that we have to, we have to, you know, do that.
I've been on HARB for 26 years, and back in the old days, we always used to meet with council once a year, remember, Jeff?
Absolutely.
Well, with that being said, I would, I'm going to make the motion, I'll be the, I'll be the big guy, I'm going to make the motion that we, hold on, hold on, hold on, we're not ready yet.
So council doesn't have anything else of Robin and Rich. I would ask Mr. Rabina, if he wants to respond, he can. You're not required because you've made your presentation last week, but if you wanted to respond to some points, now's your chance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did want to just point out a few items as a reminder. The process and the people there are wonderful, and I think by his first words, by saying that they made changes and I made them. I was extremely accommodating for what they wanted, which cost the project tens of thousands of dollars. So it's not like I was difficult. We were negotiating on what I wanted to build for my home versus where they wanted to go. And at times, I just didn't want that on my home. So we, we made accommodations. As far as the process with the fence, I don't want the council to think that I was ignorant to the process in terms of, not ignorant, maybe that is the right word, ignorant in the sense that I didn't know. But I wasn't defiant to the process because my understanding was if we could put a fence up, because the last time I was at HARB, I thought I was done. And then when we put a fence up, we didn't know that we needed a permit. I got a phone call that we needed to get a permit and that it was a free permit, it's, you know, part of this process, and so I immediately came up and, and did that. And then Sally said that, you know, I need to go in front of HARB. You know, obviously, the hair on my neck went up again, but, you know, it's not because I was trying to avoid something or not doing something right. I mean, I, I didn't have to put a fence up, but, you know, I did. And obviously, I think if we like the fence, you have two new families coming into the Borough, they obviously like the fence. And I just, those are really the two points that I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Rabina. Okay, so if nothing further, if the motion should be a motion to adopt the resolution to either approve the certificate appropriateness or not approve the appropriateness for the fence, and then I will draft the resolution. So it should be by resolution. Okay, Lou?
I'll make that motion, that we prepare, we'll have a, we'll vote on the resolution to accept for certificate appropriateness, which you will, the final, which you will draw.
Okay, to make it clear, so it'd be a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the vinyl fence for 301, 303 at Radcliffe Street. Okay, that's the motion. We have a second. Ms. Cullen, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have, one, two, we got five, four, and two against. Mr. abstained. Mr., is that the abstainer? Okay, so the resolution is adopted, I'll draft that, and I'll send that off to Mr. Rabina, copy to HARB.
We need to get questions and comments right there. I don't know, we got anything right there?
You want to just stop?
I thought it was going away, I didn't know what you were doing.
Okay, we just got done with all the questions and comments.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but usually that's, you know, what the president says. The only comment that I have is this, I mean, to me personally, I don't have a problem with the fence. I think the fence does look nice, but again, it's not my position, right? To me, I actually do care what you guys are doing, and, you know, I think that you guys are in that position for a reason. And, you know, I'm just going to go by what you say. I mean, that, to me, I think that's important that we do that, you know what I mean? So everyone else could say, yeah, I think that you're great, you're good, but to me, you know, it's, it's really what comes out in the way you vote is really what you feel, so that's my comment.
Okay, any other comments? All right, hold on, hold on. So we're, now we're going to do the, we're going to do the motion, the vote again. So the motion to adopt the resolution to approve the certificate of appropriateness for vinyl fence, we have a roll call vote.
Mr. DeMaurer is absent. Mr. Ricchio?
No.
Mr. Zalano?
No.
Mr. Pezz?
Yes.
Ms. Cullen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Crotrochi?
Yes.
Mr. Piquet?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, four to two. I will adjourn that resolution, and we'll get that off to the parties. And again, Rich and Robin, thank you for your time and all your efforts, and my understanding is we're going to get a meeting together with the zoning officer, the inspector, and let's see if we can get, and a couple councilmen, and let's see if we can at least get this communication better. Thank you all.
Your motion adjourned.
Your motion adjourned.
Any second of our.